Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Would you join us for the pledge? We've got a representative here from God Country, that'll be Charlotte, Tennessee. Uh, Charlie, I'm here. If you think nobody do this. What does that mean? Number five, two, Charlie, I'm here. Right? Thank you. Would you join us for the pledge?
Stand up. I've been doing this for a long time. I've been in college, so I've been doing this for a long time. I've always been, I don't know, God, you know, they saw, they did it in your past.
We've got a representative here from God Country, that'll be Charlotte, Tennessee. Uh, Charlie, I'm here. If you think nobody do this. What does that mean? Number five, two, Charlie, I'm here. Right? Thank goodness, we have Tyler Wright, Zachary Cooper, Shelby Liberty, and Abby Rylander. Those guys are playing here. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve. Oh, sorry. Retained.
We need to add two C. We have a speaker, Ms. Reed. Under maintenance, we need to add under three C A roofs at White Bluff and Stewart Burns. R F P. And R F Q for high wall at D C H S. And then under five A, we need to add L E A compliance report.
Okay, that's, we have that as five A?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Have any other changes or additions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve. And a second, any other discussion? Please cast your vote.
I'm looking for a ma'am. I thought yes, but it's not there. Shouldn't it pop up automatically?
Mine did.
We're starting a new B O E connect here, so please bear with us.
I'm not real smart on top of that, so.
This is still spinning. Um. Yeah.
See? I'm just blind.
No, it just popped up. Is it?
It may have not been open when you sent it. Can you resend it? I got it now. Thank you. What it was, I was logging in. Where you sent it?
I got it again. Should I have been in? But you sent the whole thing. For practice, you can vote again.
I voted no.
Yes. It's just for practice.
Motion carried. Thank you. Next, we have approvals from the, of the minutes from the previous meeting. Have any changes?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any other discussion? Please cast your vote. Motion carried. Next, we have recognitions.
Madam Chair, I would like to thank our Oakmont Elementary students for joining tonight and singing Christmas carols. So I'd like to give them a hand. I have two individual groups that I would like to recognize tonight. Our first is Ms. Hope Bryson. Ms. Hope is one of our educators and Hope was recognized as one of the 2024 Youth Prevention Partners of the Year with the Drug Free Coalition. And so the work that she does with our youth is impeccable and we thank you, Ms. Hope.
Thank you.
Our second group is from Creekwood. So if you come on in, um, under the direction of Ms. Langen, I went to witness these young people play in the Mario Kart League competition. They are undefeated. And so, um, I watched teamwork, a lot of skills. They were very dedicated, working together. Ms. Langen did a wonderful job of coaching. I will say that I grew up with an Atari and Pac-Man and it is so much different, but it looked like a lot of fun. It brought me some anxiety, uh, but I was cheering them on and very proud. So I would like to give each of these students a certificate. And so Dr. Marvin and, and, uh, Rachel Cobb is in, I'd like for you to be in this photo. Landon Sawyers, where's Mr. Landon? Okay, Landon, you did a good job. And I love the Landon place when he gets excited and he turns all the way around in his teeth. So that was exciting. Lea Cranfield, Lea, great work. Matthew Swift.
Matthew, good job.
Rebecca Dillon, the only female on the team. Jason. Good job, Jason. Jason, he could keep up with all the math and the scores and he was saying, we're winning, we're winning. And he would calculate. He did a great job. And let's see, Eric. I got that. Thank you. You did a wonderful job too. So great example of teamwork. So Dr. Marvin, would you be in this, Becca? Yes, just, just, just tell them a little bit about the program, about thirty seconds.
I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the program. I started esports this year, part of our after school STEM program. And, um, it, um, it became something that I was very amazed with. It's definitely gaming, but what I love about it is that it brings that inclusive nature. The team you just saw is actually our special ed unified league, which means that half of the students are partners and the other half are considered the special ed athletes. And I'm sure while they stood up here, you couldn't tell which was which, which I absolutely come from a spread background and something that I absolutely adore. It's opened up their communications, their skills, and definitely the esports program opens up great opportunities for scholarships and jobs and everything I feel as educators and parents and community members, we want for our children and for our good community. So, uh, we're starting our spring league here soon. We're going to try to see if we can get some A V people to do some, uh, what's called shoutcasting on them. So I'm trying to train them and, um, I hope it continues to grow into all the other schools that we can be the top in Tennessee. So thank you for your time and, um.
Thank you, Coach Lang.
Next, we have student board representatives.
Um, in this past month on the Hill, the drama club put on three amazing performances of C S Lewis, Lion, The Witch and The Wardrobe. I personally went to the Friday night showing and loved every second. I laughed. I've got emotional, every. Um, in F F A, the Ag Barn is currently filled with little freshly born baby goats and they're very cute. Um, as far as Hosa, sixteen Hosa members placed in regional competition and qualified to participate in state competition in the spring. The Lady Cougars basketball team has had a slow but good start to their season and the Cougar basketball team has won five games in a row, working on their sixth tonight at Creekwood. Go Cougars. The coming home day is set for January thirty first. Sadie Reed and Mary Cruz have been named queen and queen. Both the Lady Cougar and Cougar wrestling teams have had strong starts to their seasons with three and two wins respectively. And the Cougar cheer team placed sixth at the U C A's Mookie Mountain Regionals on December seventh. And the dance team placed third in the U D A game day division and fifth in the hip hop. The Cougar bowling team has had a strong start to their season, which came to an end at the district tournament, while the Lady Cougar bowling team had an undefeated regular season and placed second in district tournament, advancing to regionals. Emily Fuller and Samara Almendares both qualified as individuals for the state competition. Lastly, I wish you all a very merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, Lily changed.
As you may have noticed, I'm not Lily. Unfortunately, Lily could not make it tonight as she is cheering on our red hogs to. Fortunately, Lily could not make it tonight as she is cheering on our Redhawks today's Dixon County High School and our Wells Town County Rattler. So since you're stuck with me tonight, let me introduce Hunter. My name is Hunter Scott, I'm a senior at Creekwood. And also Lily LB's best friend. She told me to tell you guys hello. Now, enough about me, let me tell you what's going on over at the Wood. Tonight, our Redhawk basketball teams are facing the Cougars at Creekwood for the Dunkin' on Diabetes Games. Flag football tryouts were Tuesday, but a great turnout with around 45 people eager to try out. The esports teams are undefeated Mario Kart champions. Baseball has begun conditioning in preparation for the 2025 season. Our work-based learning students have officially wrapped up their first semester at their job sites. Our clinical students have completed their second C C M A exam, which will prepare them for the official medical assistant exam in the spring. Wednesday, our seniors traveled to the city forum for an A C T Reward Day field trip. Seniors that made a 21 on their A C T or showed growth from the previous test were invited. We would like to thank our sponsors, Mount Liberty Cumberland Presbyterian Church, Charlotte Hometown Pharmacy, Salt and Pepper Grill, TriStar Bank, Petals on the Bluff, First Bank, Pappy's Pizza, Mans Market, Murphy's C B, Chapel's C B, Ace Hardware, and Jim Earl Handyman Services. We have 665 students. We had 665 students miss less than five days in the first semester, qualifying them for our fun Top Golf attendance field trip. Creekwood is excited to announce that F C A will be starting back up after winter break. We will be meeting Friday mornings before school. Creekwood Student Government successfully completed its Angel Tree Program by collecting and delivering to over 30 angels. Lily and I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. We know that you were leading to go see that ballgame and so you can go ahead and leave at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
You did a great job. Thank you, Lily.
That's for Lily, Hunter.
Next, under Communications, we have a speaker, Ms. Reed.
Oh, yeah. Um, good evening, y'all. My name is Connie Reed and I live in Whitebluff. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on school safety tonight. It's near and dear to my heart because on September 4th of this year, I answered the phone to my sister screaming, you need to pray, just pray. Her grandson, my great nephew attends Appalachian School in Barrow County, Georgia, and there was an active shooter. At that time, we didn't know where James was or whether he was one of those that had been shot. We feared the worst and prayed for the best. All we knew is that there were dead and wounded. James was one of the lucky ones, he was hunkered down in his classroom. The teachers at Appalachian and most, if not all of the Georgia schools wear a security lanyard that when the button is pushed notifies the S R O and the authorities of an emergency and exactly where that emergency is at. My niece is a teacher in Georgia. She was at our home on Thanksgiving and she had her lanyard with her. She was happy to show it to us and she showed us how, it's just a button, that's all you do is push it. She said it gave all of the teachers a feeling of security to have those. While they're expensive, I think everyone would agree that no expense is too great to help keep our children safe. No device is ever going to stop, completely stop the things that are going on these days. But here in Dixon County, we should not live in a bubble thinking that they're, that, that it will never happen to us. Active shooters in schools are a very harsh reality that we are faced with. In the Dixon County school system, we've always taken pride in the fact that we are front runners when it comes to technology. This technology is available to us now. I need you to look at each other and decide how it would make each of us feel if we had to face this situation, knowing we allowed money to get in the way of safety of our children. We have a donor ready to pay for these lanyards for both of the Whitebluff schools. I'm asking that you look at this, get me a price for the purchase of the lanyards for the Whitebluff schools and allow my donor to fund it. I believe that once we get the ball rolling, more donors will step up to cover the cost for the rest of our schools. I have a magnet on my car representing Barrow County as Barrow Strong. I don't want to add one that says Dixon County Strong. Just this week, we were once again faced with this issue in Madison, Wisconsin, at a private Christian school. One student, one adult, and the 15-year-old shooter died with several others still fighting for their lives in the hospital. What makes any of us think that we in Dixon County are exempt from the horror that this is now? Again, I thank you for your time and I ask that as leaders and protectors of our children, you take a stand on this issue.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Next, we have curriculum and instruction.
Board members, this was an added item. We have already approved the 2526 calendar. However, after we have found out when Dixon and Creekwood's homecoming will be, which will be October 3rd. They are both on the same day. It has been added to the calendar and I wanted to show you that from our conversations at the planning session. We also would like to share with you the two calendars for the 2627 academic year. The difference with both of these calendars, we took All Veterans Day to be in, for students to be in attendance. And you will see that one will show a week off at Thanksgiving and one will not. The one that shows in attendance for November 23rd and 24th, you will see in May, we would dismiss and be out of school by Monday, the 24th in May. Those are the differences and these are the two that we will place for public comment. Are there questions?
Where'd you move those two days, I'm sorry?
Down from, at May 24th, we would get out two days earlier.
This is option A.
This is option A, yes. Option B, if we kept in November 23rd and 24th, then we would, on option B, dismiss May 26th.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I, I think it's probably going to be for someone like maybe Mr. Haley, who's been around here for a long time. When we used to have the nine-two-nine-two-nine-two, where did we lose the second week in spring? Because we, we're nine-two-nine-two-nine-one now, right? Is that where we're?
We used to start August 1st and get out May 31st as a base start. Memorial Day became a factor, people wanted out before that. Other things like even the discussion of Thanksgiving and Veterans Day now, which would change that calendar. But largely it started from the T C A T testing when it first came out. We were doing the nine-two-nine-two, that was probably 2012, give or take a year. And whenever the, the testing window was different then and it was shorter. So we were being out of school for two weeks spring break and then testing the next week. So the decision was made to do away with the two weeks spring break and move it to after test time. And from there, it's largely been based on, based on the, the test window. And days have been removed to, to get out of Memorial Day. And how Easter fail will affect it, but largely the fall stays in place and Christmas stays in break in place. And then the spring will adjust around based on getting out before Memorial Day, which is why the Saturday is there. And a lot don't like to come to work on the Saturday half day, but the option to make the days is, is either half day on Saturday or the day after Memorial Day, because you have to have that day on the calendar.
Was President's Day, Memorial of the King Day, I realize those are bank holidays, but as there's always been.
As long as I've been here, they have. The federal holidays have always been in place.
Okay.
Questions? Next, under Finance, we have monthly financial report for all funds.
It's Ms. Valerie Underhill, it's going to come to the mic.
Before we move on to that, will you move your screen? Just move it. Did you just make it bigger?
Yes, I did.
Okay, does it do that on everybody's?
That can make it bigger, hit the plus sign up there.
I, I know, but I think mine is doing whatever she does. I mean, I'm following.
That's what.
So you gotta unfollow.
You can unfollow, I mean.
I mean, I like the way you was looking at it, but you, you obviously read a lot faster than me and I can't get through the thing and I'm like, where'd it, where'd it go?
Ms. Underhill.
Okay, so this is the monthly financial report for November. As you can see, revenues are up as compared to last year and expenditures are a little bit down. Property taxes down, sales taxes up. Um, as for utilities, they're a little bit up. Diesel fuel is down and gasoline is down. So the next reports you'll see are the balance sheet summarized for 141. Sorry, 142, 143, and 177. And then the next report will be the summary financial statement, summary level total for 141, 142, 143, and 177.
Do we have any questions?
Which part are we, are we just talking about the balance sheet right now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Have any questions about the balance sheet? Next, we have account 141, 142, 143, 177, monthly reports. Anyone have questions about the monthly?
We need to approve the month.
We need to approve both, correct?
Move to approve monthly report.
Motion to approve the monthly financial report.
Second.
We have a second, do we have any other questions or discussion? Take a vote, please. Motion carries, next, we have amendment for funds 141 and 142.
So I have presented before the amendment, the summary of those amendments, anything 5,000 or greater that was changed. So the first page is a summary of those amendments for revenues. And next is expenditures. And this is all for the 141.
Those are like insurance money when there's damages that come into it or something?
Yes.
Have any other questions for Ms. Valerie? Ms. Thiel?
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask about the I S M grants, like there's a lot of change with like a net.
So.
Five difference, such as.
Mr. Ray is here, but that's his grant. He allocates that in the Department of Education e-plan website. But they essentially had him allocate, like last year, his, all of his expenditures were in 71,300 and 72,230, which are the two Votek accounts. But they had him split some of those up to 71,100, they had to move guidance to 72,130. So it's just minor changes here and there, but that grant is fully reimbursed by the state.
You're just moving account numbers, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Thiel, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Under account 71100429, we have the 700,000. That was a donation previously. First off, let me say to you, Valerie, as I said to you earlier, I think the summary is very helpful so that we kind of understand what's changing here. And I can just say as a, a new board member, this was very helpful for me to get this, it helped me follow some. But I was just wondering what our plans are to spend this 700,000, which I understand has previously donated. And so I'm wondering, do we have plans for that? Because I'm sure Dr. Sutherland, you can think of all kinds of things to spend it on. So I'm just wondering, since that says instructional supplies and materials and it's divided among the various schools, when, when we might know how, what we're going to spend that on?
Well, it's a large sum and we're very appreciative, so we want to spend it wisely. Some of the things that we've used it for were the open labs with teachers. Some of their stipends came out of that because it's instructional and it's helping teachers get better. We have spent this on some of our mentors for the Grow Your Own. I don't have my line item, but we are spending it very wisely because we know that, I think the first year, the parameters were set around technology. And now it's opened up so we can use it more generally in instruction and materials. We are utilizing funds for schools when we see that there's a need. Valerie, can you think of anything off the top right now that we have spent it on this year?
Um, I know one thing was, I think the Bean Stack.
Bean Stack, curriculum. So curriculum comes out of that for instruction, but we can make an item, we can give a list of all of the expenditures that come out of that grant. But it, it is a large sum of money and we don't want to just, just start giving it out. We want to be very purposeful and intentional.
I just think to have a donor that was willing to donate that amount, we need to make, even.
Absolutely.
Anonymous, we need to make sure that we're using it wisely, but I also want to make sure that we spend it, so.
Yes, well, I think that amount has come down from 2 million. Was it, how much was that total?
The total donation?
It was 2 million.
It's 2 million, so you could see we are spending it.
Then our classroom increase to the teachers come from that money also, we increased that for a two or three-year period. It comes out of that money also. So every classroom gets extra money because of this and has, this is a third year for that?
Yes, this is the third and final year for that.
Just one other thing, you know, one night we had the demonstration about the technology, I'm going to say the smart TVs. But it was much more than that, so I'm, you know, I just thought for our teachers, that's something that could be very beneficial. I didn't know how many teachers might have requested those, but I just wanted to raise that as perhaps something.
Absolutely.
That's new technology that could be used.
Absolutely, and we will get teacher, teachers can let us know, principals will let us know which teachers would be willing to utilize that technology. Training will have to occur, we're not opposed to that, but we want to. Training will have to occur. We're not opposed to that, but we want to make sure that if we spend and allocate that money toward those items, the Pythagorean boards, that that's what we're using them for, that they are being utilized in the classroom.
Any other question?
Well, this is not a question, I think, or a statement, but a couple of meetings back, I had asked about the the daycare and the aftercare. And so today, Valerie did provide me with the income and the expense for that. So as we look at that new policy, because we are currently expending more than what we're taking in, I thought it might be helpful if we look at the locations so that, you know, we can do some some type of assessment on that.
Have any questions about the amendments for funds 141 and 142?
Ms. Parker.
Yes, Mr. Parker.
Like, when you're looking at 47,309, 47,401, 404, why is there not budget numbers in there? Am I on the right page?
Which page are you on?
Amendment for 142.
What's the account number?
The 47, 47,309, 47,401, 47,404. I was just, I don't know how to tell you where I'm at. I'm all at the top.
Are you on the summary financial statement, summary level total from the monthly report?
There.
142.
Does that know where y'all are on?
We're on 141.
141, but that's okay.
We're moving ahead.
Was 141 not the revenues?
No.
I tell you what, never mind. I'm gonna get the follow. Go ahead. I got no more play.
But your question was, there's a budget amended budget.
So there wasn't original budget for those because that was like the S R funds and stuff. And so we didn't expect to have any rollover back when we were planning the original budget, but we did end up having money that we were able to spend through September the 30th. And so that's why it's in the amended budget and not the original.
Thank you.
So with those numbers up there on the screen, the net amendment's gonna be somewhere in the upper two, low 300,000. It's, we're not asking to amend our budget 3 million dollars.
For 142?
For the 141 fund. This summary, I'm looking at the summary pages. I'm taking the the amended revenues, amended expenses, and the net's gonna be about 300,000. Is that right?
Correct. Yes, sir.
And I say that because that screen's going out, being broadcast, and it looks like we're gonna be amending 3 million. That's not what we're doing. It's the net's in the 300 range, 300,000.
You'll look on page nine of the 141. The deficiency of revenues over expenditures. Originally, we had budgeted to be in a deficit of 5.1 million or 5.11 million. And now, if these amendments are approved, we'd be at a deficit of 5.198.
Have any other questions?
Need a motion to approve. Know what you're looking for at this point? You want to do 142 to do them together?
You want them separate? We don't.
I don't think they need, I don't think they have to be. They can be together.
Any questions about 141 or 142? We have a motion to approve the amendment? You have a question, Mr. Tadwick?
I'm seeing the 47, this career letter, more people with this endorsement are retiring. Do you have any idea how many more people we have that are under the career letters?
We don't. But we can probably try to get that.
I can get that for you.
That's not anything I would write off.
Well, I think you had it on topic.
Yeah.
Move to approve amendment.
But there's a smaller font for that.
Show them to us.
A motion to approve the amendment for funds 141 and 142 as presented to us. Do you have a second?
Yeah, my motion.
Oh, I think we missed your motion.
It's the second.
Aaron with the second. Any other?
I didn't want to motion my own, second my own motion, so we're good.
We have a vote, please.
It's your full screen, but not yours.
That's fine. Motion carries. Yes, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have plan for school audit.
So we kind of touched on that at the planning session. And honestly, with amendments, I haven't had time to put together a formal plan. But I do plan to work on that over the next two weeks and start meeting with bookkeepers after the break.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I got a question, please. So clarifications, that's for the activity fund, not for the the general fund audit.
Yes, it's for the internal school.
Thank you, Valerie. Next, we have maintenance. The RFP process at Stewart Burns and White Bluff Elementary, Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When the board, if the board will recall in the October meeting, you all approved the RFQ, which is a request for qualifications for the moves that Stewart Burns and White Bluff Elementary. And at that time, I explained it was a two-step process. The RFQ, the quest for qualification, and then RFP, request proposal. But I went back and looked at the minutes, and I went back and reviewed the meeting. And I think there was not sufficient enough clarity when the board voted that I wanted to bring back to the board the RFP. So we've done the RFQ. We've gotten four qualified bidders who now bid on this project. The next step is to issue the request for proposals, which we're prepared to do, but I wanted the board to go ahead and okay that tonight so that we can put the RFP out on the street, and then bids will come in. And then you all can say yes, no, or not now on the bids. So it's no more money or anything being expended. And it and it just wasn't clear to me from the minutes and from the meeting tape. I just, it's the first time we've done this process, and so I want to make sure that we're pretty tight on it. So that's why I'm bringing back for you all to authorize putting the request for proposal out on the street. So I just need a motion and approval. Happy to answer any questions if you have.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the RFP for White Bluff and Stewart Burns.
That's correct.
Any other questions, Ms. Thiel?
So you said we have four.
Qualified bidders. That's correct.
Can, is it appropriate to state who those people are, or it's not?
I don't, I don't have them with me. I mean, it's a, it's a public document, but yes, I'm happy to get them to you, but.
Will those be the only people allowed to bid?
That's correct.
Because they're the?
Because they're qualified.
Gotcha.
And if you all will recall, this was, we were having trouble getting qualified bidders because we didn't go through this process. Because it takes a lot of work to put a bid package together for a contractor. And so they wanna, they wanna make sure that they've got a real shot at the deal. And so this, this brings in more substantial qualified bidders, if you will.
We have any other questions for Mr. Hall? Take a vote, please.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have RFQ for the High Wall at DCHS, Mr. Hall?
Yeah, board members, and this is the same, the same, but since we now kind of been through it, I want to make sure that you all are understanding that this is a two-step process. So tonight, I'm gonna ask you to approve us putting out a request for qualifications for the High Wall project at Dixon County High. And then the second step of that process, once we get qualified bidders, will be that we will go ahead and issue the RFP. No money will be expended. It's just a two-step process rather than a one-step RFP process, kind of the way we've normally done it. But the engineers, architects, and consultants are advising us on these types of projects, the way to get the best and most qualified bidders to do the work is is through this two-stage process. And so you would, you would approve, the motion would be to approve the request for qualifications for the High Wall project at Dixon County. And then, after we have the qualified bidders approve, then us putting out the request for proposals on that project. Happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, so after that process is done, then we you go out for bids, and we'll have the options of board to accept any bid, no bid, send it back. It's still in the board.
That's correct.
But that, you might, I don't want to make a motion to ever tell us for RFQ and RFP for the High Wall at Dixon County High School.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the RFQ, RFP for the High Wall at Dixon County High School. Any other questions? Vote, please.
Motion carries.
Mr. Parker?
This is off a little bit, but does the public know how we're voting? And if not, I guess.
It was showing up earlier, and I.
It hasn't for the last time, so I guess.
I think what she's doing is she is moving ahead, get ready for the next subject, and you're following her is probably why.
I had it moved.
Cause it showed up on mine.
And I just wonder if until we can get that fixed, maybe we need to.
Have this call announced.
Yeah, we just need to vote out loud of some sort.
Just have this call as announced the vote.
Okay. Yeah, that's fantastic.
That's why my vote didn't come in the first time. I had just logged in and hadn't followed yet. So it didn't come to me when you sent it out.
Okay, next, student services, field trips.
You have seen the uploaded field trips from various schools, William James, Dixon County High School, Creekwood, DMS, Burns. The only field trip we added that came in past the deadline was the FFA 4H swine show that will occur January the 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th in Cookeville, Tennessee.
I didn't see any overnights or estates.
Just the FFA 4H swine show.
Cookeville's overnight.
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 Yes.
Make a motion to approve the FFA field trip?
Same.
We have a motion and a second to approve the FFA overnight trip. Any other questions? Take a vote, please.
Pick the ice. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have human resources.
Madam Chair, you will see the human resource report for December 2024. We have two retirements, Mildred Clifton, who was one of our sped bus assistants, six years, and Ms. Carolyn Fish from Van Lear, our Ten All Corps tutor, 24 years. And I want to thank both of them for their service. You will see resignations, leaves of absences, non-renewals, hires, transfers, assignments, and reassignments.
No mask screen. Oh, okay, okay. Are you able to pull it out? This is what you get when I click on it. Ms. Thiel, when you, when you. Maybe I changed it. I don't know how I unfollowed you, but I always follow you.
Hit the follow button.
You and I were doing the same thing.
Is that because it's not public information?
Yes. You, I think you should.
Where's Bean?
Yeah.
Got it.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you.
Have any questions, Mr. Tadwick?
See the non-baccalaureate flag for Dixon. We got one for Creekwood yet.
We are working on those. Mr. Holly, do we have an update on, are you asking about the flag football coaches? Do we have an update on those coaches and positions?
Ms. Hall sent out an email the other day, and there's a document that we're all sharing. And they have just started filling in those, so we do not have a final report. But the coaches are being recommended going through.
But the coaches are being recommended, going through Human Resources, and we should have a full list probably first of next month.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Phil, we're going through that process.
Well, I just hadn't looked down far enough, but I do see one. Four from the bottom. Sorry.
Next, we have the Human Resources Exit Employment Report from the past month. You have a question, Mr. Chadwick?
Is there any way to get a cumulative report from each school?
Maybe. Ms. Hall is not with us tonight, but I can ask if this report will pull an accumulative report for each school.
Any other questions for under HR? Next, we have job descriptions.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I wanted to, anytime there is a change on a job description, I would like to bring that and share with you. If you will look at the Accounting Business Office Clerk, we have added to that job description functions that they will perform with scanning tech for technology documents, where they will scan and record student permanent record documentation. So that has been an added item. Are there questions on that job description? Yes, ma'am.
I just question if it has the right title. And the reason I ask that is because it begins with Accounting/Business Office Clerk. But we say under the qualifications, bookkeeping experience is recommended, but not necessary. And I feel like if it truly is an accounting clerk position, I understand this person is already here, but I, I just feel like I think it has the wrong title. Because it, it, they should have, if, if their title is accounting clerk, even if it's accounting clerk, they should have some level of bookkeeping experience. So I just think instead of having bookkeeping experience is recommended, but not necessary, I think that qualification needs to change.
This is a position in, with federal programs with Dr. Collins. Could you kind of explain what the role is and why this qualification is like it, like it is, like it is stated?
My understanding of the accounting clerk title, and if Valerie's still here, she might pipe in on this too, is that it is the, really the beginning step of, of entry into the, into that field. This individual keeps POs for me, does, does some bookkeeping work, and she did have some bookkeeping experience. But she works in tandem and with the federal programs and with the Finance Department.
I guess my question would just be, should the job description title be Business Office Clerk?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Holly.
I think the word office is key in that description. It is our accounting office. It's our bookkeeping office. I've heard it referred to both ways. Both take place back there. So the Accounting/Bookkeeping Office dictates where this clerk works at. I don't see it as an accounting position. With the pay scale at 29, it's an entry level. And I think you would choose somebody that had some background and would prefer it. But if you don't have it, it is, it is titled for an office clerk. It just is the accounting bookkeeping. It could be the Technology Office Clerk. Each, each office has one, do they not, to some degree? So that's the way I read the wording in that. The word office, I think, is key in that description.
I would kind of like to look at that further before I made a decision.
Just, just a recommendation, just an observation.
Dr. Collins and I will look at that further.
Next, we have Job Description for Cloud Systems Administrator.
Yes, and I would like to ask Mr. Lewis to come forward. This job was brought to my attention. Mr. Lewis had recommended the changes prior to me coming on board. And when looking at this job description, those changes had not been made. And so I'm going back, looking through, and speaking with each director what we need in our offices. And so this Cloud System Administrator is already here with us. But what she is doing, you see in the red what all has been added to this job and how we have transformed her work. And so, Mr. Lewis, would you like to speak to that? And then I'll talk about the changes on the salary grade.
Okay. Basically, what this was is I, last budget cycle, I asked to have Ms. Tammy Spicer's position reclassified. And I've got a little statement. I'll just read to you. So requesting a reclassification of her position and a corresponding pay increase retroactive to July 1, 2024. This request was originally made during last year's budget planning, but was not included in the final budget presented to Dr. Cleveland. I obviously talked to her. She kind of summarized that and was willing to listen, which I'm very thankful for. The request is based on the significant expansion of Tammy's responsibilities and the critical role she now, now plays in managing essential educational systems for Dixon County Schools. Tammy has served Dixon County Schools for over 19 years and has always taken on additional responsibilities without hesitation. In addition to her previous duties, Tammy has assumed primary administrator or lead technician responsibilities for a range of vital systems and projects. These include Google Workspace for Education, ClassLink, which is our single sign-on platform for the district's digital educational resources, both the Titan Payment Center and Skyward Protection Plan payment systems, the district school, district and school websites, inventory management system, and our help desk system. These systems are integral to the education process in Dixon County Schools and involve complex policies and security measures that require a high level of competence and knowledge. The size, scope, and skill set required to manage these systems are comparable to those of the network administrator position, which is a pay scale 40. Given the increased complexity and responsibility of Tammy's role, I believe that a reclassification and pay increase are warranted. The current pay scale does not adequately reflect the level of expertise and the critical nature of her work. I respectfully request that you consider the, consider the request that provide Tammy with the appropriate reclassification and pay increase. Thank you. Any questions?
So when I met with Ben and I met with Tammy, and I looked at the job description and what all had been added to her, I felt that her scale did need to move from a 34 to a 40. And that's about an $8,000 difference.
Said money's not in this budget. So there will be an amendment later or-
It will. Yes, sir. But she is doing this work currently. And, but the former job description did not indicate that. And so as we are looking at job descriptions and updating them, then you see all of the red here.
Do we have any other questions on the Cloud Systems Administrator?
Changed the, the job description title also.
Yes, we took off the latter part of the job description. After I sat with Tammy and Ben, that job description really was not a part of the work that she is doing currently.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Holly.
I see what Tammy does, and seen her for years. She's always been the leader for any of us that need anything in technology. And she's about a part of your department. There's no question. Making this change immediate year with an amendment, is that going to need to be an amendment sent to the county commission for final approval? And if that's the case, then I think it might be more in order to put through the work session and discuss options. And I think there's a way to get it done. But I think voting on it without that discussion probably creates an unintended consequence. Was an amendment tonight? In that case, I'd take everything I said back. Thank you, Ms. Valerie.
Next, we have Human-
Do we need to approve this job description?
You do.
Before we-
Because it's on a different pay scale.
So we've already approved the amendments. Sounds like, I don't know, I'll guess. I bet you I did if I say it. But it's a great thing, someone to come and have a good boss that wants to fight for a hard worker so we don't lose her. So move to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve Cloud Systems Administrator changes.
Second.
We have a second. We have any other questions? We vote, please.
All eyes.
All eyes. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, may I interrupt?
Yes, sir.
On the form of order, only job description that was technically pulled to look into further, I think since it's on the agenda, that we have to actually take a vote for that. So I'm going to make a motion that we table the job description for the Accounting Business Office Clerk to make it proper to be moved down for her review.
Second. We just left that hanging.
Have a motion and a second to table the Accounting Clerk job description. Any other discussion?
Also, it's a test for Dr. Collins' ability to go back and make that change. I think she's got it.
Vote, please.
Proving it as presented, or not taking the description or-
We're voting to do that.
I have this button that says motion result, motion table, but then I clicked.
Yep. Fortunately, the video backup too, so.
Well, the only thing-
It doesn't reflect that.
It's a, it's a table in motion. Burn on the machine over here.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Phil?
I was only on that. I mean, I realize I voted yes, but I, my, I was just asking a question about the title, not that, you know, this line should not, not that five shouldn't be added if, because the, and the pay scale isn't changing on that. I was just asking the question about the job title.
It was a good question, and we can go back and look at it.
We just tabled it. We just-
I'm just not trying to, no, you're, you're fine.
We'll go back and look at that.
Mr. Parker?
We'll take a break, yes, for five minutes.
We'll take a break, yes, for five minutes.
Back to Human Resources, tenure recommendation. Madam Chair, Board. We need to grant Chastity Green from Charlotte Elementary School tenure. Her form was missed in May. And so when we realized that error, we want to make it right. So we want to approve her tenure. She's a great teacher. And if I were teaching today, I would not want to be left off that list. So I am asking you to approve Ms. Chastity Green's tenure.
So move.
Second.
You have a first and a second, Mr. Parker?
I'm all about everything you just said, if they deserve it, I won't dim the granite. But I just have to let me unfollow this for just, just a second.
Okay.
Because I think. Just give me one second. I'm working on it. I don't know that matters if we grant her tenure, but she resigned.
But we, we need to grant her tenure because she received tenure in Dixon County.
And it carries to wherever she goes?
It would.
Okay.
I think where if she goes somewhere else, doesn't have those a, I will use the right term, a layover or a wait period. If you bring somebody back that has tenure, even in our county, it's not instant tenure. They come in, they have to meet a certain
Right, they do.
Name of accomplishments there also.
But being that she should have received tenure back in May for us, I think we just need to do our due diligence and grant it for her.
I don't care with all that. I was just wondering, like I noticed here on the resignation list, so. I don't, if, yeah, I'm good with it.
Yeah, she's a good teacher. I hate to see her go.
Have any other questions?
Is her resignation effective?
Hmm, I would have to ask.
She's not resigned already. She's still in our employ.
She is. And at this time, we typically hold people for 30 days, their contract, 30 day contract.
I guess I realize that, but she is a teacher through Christmas break.
She is.
Not me and help.
Any other questions? Take a vote, please.
Good eyes. Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, under Administration, we have LEA Compliance Report.
Well, as I sit in this seat, I learn lots of new things. And so one of the documents that school directors fill out are local education agency compliance reports. And so after I realized that this report, we were out of compliance last year. And I don't know how many years it goes back. But we are out of compliance with three of our schools on a PE requirement. The state requires us to have two 30 minute time segments of PE per week. We have Centennial Dixon Elementary and Stuart Burns Elementary that are out of compliance. I'm going to investigate. I've spoken with Ms. Melinda Fortner. And we're going to look at schedules. Right now, the size of Centennial and Stuart Burns Elementary is part of the why, the root cause there. Dixon Elementary, Dr. Winstead and I spoke with Dr. Brown. We are going to sit down and look at schedules to see what we can do about how do we meet the compliance with the state around this PE requirement? And so that's what we will work on. You do have to, as a board, if you will, approve that you know that we have three schools out of compliance with PE requirements from the state. And our board chair will have to sign on, sign that in agreeance, and then I will upload this and send it to the state.
Waiting for approval or acknowledgement?
You just approved that we, well, I guess acknowledgement that we are out of compliance. And Madam Chair Brogdon will sign off on it as the board chair, and then I will upload it to the State Department.
I have a question about that. And may I interrupt us and allow them, would we not have to? And I understand why you said acknowledgement, because it's in the past, but.
We're still out of compliance.
I think we have to approve the compliance report. We can't acknowledge it. We have to approve our chair to sign that. It's a little different than the last thing we acknowledged. Now, I have the PE question, but let's get past all this.
I think it was approved last year as well. We were in the same.
Yes, it's not the first year. If I'm, they have to have two 30 minute sessions a week.
Yes.
And I think the question last year, I'm really digging deep in my memory, but I'm thinking maybe they didn't do a full 30 minutes. They made it four, 15 minutes or.
Some have combined it to one hour, one day a week.
Right, so, so that's, that was the issue. It's not they're not doing PE, they're not doing the time.
That's right. It's the time. Time and days.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion to approve in a second. Any other questions?
So what we're seeing is just like a sample, not the actual. Where we see it later.
You should have the H record plan as the second objection for that. It says one more reduction page to it.
Oh, there it is. Okay, okay. I didn't see that earlier when I looked at this for tonight.
Any other questions? Vote please.
Good times. Motion carries.
I know, I went back to the, thanks.
Motion carried. Thank you.
This is a health question about, since you mentioned PE, and I know this is out of order, but we had that grant about health that was presented. And I'm just wondering, is that, this sparked that to think, are we working on that? I know it's totally different.
But we are, we are.
That's just my question.
Right now, Ms. Morrow is out on read.
Yes.
And when she returns, that's what we're going to discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is policies for second read approval.
Yes, ma'am. Would you like for me to state the policy and the number and then go down or just take them one at a time again? These are the policies that we discussed in the planning session.
And for the policies on second read, there were no changes from the planning session to like.
So we have policy 1.906. 1.8012. Went off the wrong page. 4.700. 1.704. 1.901. 1.905. And 3.212. Do we have any questions about any of those second read policies?
Again, you said no changes since the work session on that. Make a motion to approve them all as a second reading.
Have a motion to approve the whole group in a second. Any other questions? Vote please.
All eyes. Motion carry.
And carry. Next, we have policies for first read.
And the only changes to these policies is in 2.400 revenues. And the changes reflect the discussion that happened at the planning session. They are found in page two, line nine, and on page one, line two.
Which policy?
2.400.
Repeat the lines, please.
Page two, line nine. And page one, line two.
Any questions about this policy 2.400?
this policy two point four zero zero?
You want to do them individually since your first read? You want to do them all together? You're going to be.
Let's do individual for.
Motion to approve. Policy two point four zero zero on first read with changes.
Second.
Have a motion to approve policy two point four zero zero in a second with the changes that were made. Any other questions? We vote, please. Um.
Can you come up?
I think me separating them or making that option, she's catching up with a smile.
Collins, do I need to enter them differently and be able to connect that some?
We'll, we'll do that different next.
Motion carried for two point four zero zero. Next, let's go to policy five point one zero, five point one one six.
No changes since the planning session and all of the changes that you see that we discussed at the planning change session are due to changes in T C E, T C A, and were recommended by T S B A. We've also discussed those changes with Mrs. Lori Hall.
Any questions for policy five point one one six?
Move to approve on first read. Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Vote, please. Motion carried. Next, we have policy five point two zero one.
And no changes since the planning session. Uh, the changes that were made reflect the T S B A model policy and a change in law that letters of non-renewal for employees cannot be hand delivered at the end of the year. There you can see the other means by which they can be delivered, but they cannot be hand delivered anymore. And Ms. Hall is aware of that.
Any questions about five point two zero one?
Motion to approve five point two zero one on first reading.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve policy five point two zero one on first read. Any other questions? Vote, please.
Eyes. Motion carried.
Next, we have policy two point eight one two.
T S B A recommended striking this policy completely and replacing it with two point eight zero five one, which was just approved on second read tonight.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second to approve policy two point eight one two, striking that policy. Any other questions? Vote, please.
Good eyes. Motion carries.
Next, we have director's report. Right. Did I miss one? We got four point eight zero two.
And these changes just reflect the model P S B A policy.
I'll move you except four point eight oh two. It's changed.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve four point eight zero two on first read. Any other questions? Vote, please.
Yes, this is motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Winston.
Now we have director's report, director's report. You have a folder um sitting beside of you and I've shared some information. You will see that um we have completed and um this will go out to staff and uh a few other folks um in the community to share our work and what we're doing. Each director was asked to um highlight an area of their work for the first semester. We're going to continue to release newsletters around the work every nine weeks. And so this is our first newsletter that we put together. And so I would love to have your feedback. Um, I appreciate the work of the directors. And we're excited about sharing our story and the work that's, the good, great work that's happening in the school system. The second thing I would like to share with you is I want to give a shout out to D C E A. Um, they raised fifteen hundred dollars and uh they provided forty stockings and a donation of six hundred to N H C. I have the printout and the pictures, and so I'd like to leave this up here so that you can see that. I think that's wonderful work. So thank you uh for giving back to the community. And the last thing I want to share with you, the directors have been very busy thinking about our professional development day. And so I wanted to share with you the schedules and what is happening on the professional development day in January. Do want to say, I know that um you have been invited to go out and see what's happening in schools. And so um we would like for you, you know, you're always invited to observe and look at the work and know what the work is all about. Are there questions around that? Thank you. Okay, well, you'll see you've got treats setting on your desk. Keep your container. Uh, the popcorn came from um, I got it at Charlotte. Uh, but if you keep your container, you get three dollars off when you fill it back up. Uh, lovely people and so glad that they're in Charlotte. A great business and great Christmas gifts. And so I got more stocking stuffers even for my children, uh but we love their popcorn. So I have to give a shout out to them. So I hope you enjoy and we wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Next, we have comments by D C E A. I hope I didn't steal your thunder.
We love to talk about it, so it's okay. I'm Anna Wilson, treasurer of D C E A. Um, Ben is our vice president and Hope is one of our representatives. Um, we're just so glad that the, that you all have been supporting the teachers and the students. And we've been testing, but the students have been doing drama performances and choir performances and band performances. And we've seen Dr. Sutherland there and we've seen you all there. We just really appreciate you. Um, they talked about sports earlier, but also the middle school um bowling teams have begun. And they're kind of an in-between season thing. And so that was a new thing for them that they're beginning and we're excited about. Um, there was a talent show today at C E S for the students during the day and then for the families going on now. So we're excited for them too. Um, we want to take the entire district for their efforts in helping us raise money for the N H C. We, at our meeting, we planned for twenty five stockings. We thought we would be doing really well to help twenty five people, twenty five families. Um, and we were able to do forty with all of the wonderful um efforts from the district. So we, we stuffed them with chopstick and deodorant and shampoo and word searches and pens and pencils and coloring pencils and candy canes and stuffed animals. Like we stuffed them as full as we could get them. Um, and then delivered them and even had about a six hundred dollar check to provide them for what else they needed. So it was very successful and we're really thankful. And we just want to thank the board for their hard work and um look forward to our continued collaboration in the new year.
Thank you. Comments by board members?
Ms. Steele. Um, with the vote coming up in January, I would like to encourage everyone to speak to our representatives so that we can talk about the voucher system and also about the um peer pre-K uh to try to get additional funding. Also, I think it's very important that we take what Ms. Connie Reed came and spoke with us about, that we take that very seriously. And I hope that's something that we can discuss further in in the new year.
Any other comments? Mr. Fadwick.
I like the B O E.
I appreciate y'all putting up with me tonight. It was my learning curve here, but.
You had to put up with a couple of.
At least one.
Me too, Mr. Fadwick.
And thank you for the treat.
You're welcome.
Enjoy it.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you all for your hard work and thank you for hanging in with us here. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
And it's a great, great newsletter. Very informative.
You thought it was great.
It's great.
Yes, ours.
We're charred.
Thank you.